...comps for 2014. As part of the analysis, what Mr. Jacobs did was he projected what those rents would be for the next 10 years. And he used an accepted methodology of increasing those rents by 3% for market rate and 2% for affordable rates, affordable units, every year for the next 10 years. The definition of being an economic project that I'm using is the one that the Housing and Appeals Committee has recently ruled on a case that Mr. Hill and I worked on, where they basically determined that return on total cost, as defined in the MHP guidelines, was the definition of a reasonable return. What the MHP guidelines say is that a reasonable return is the ROTC at stabilized occupancy. Stabilized occupancy is a very important concept. What it means is that as a project is built, it goes through a set of phases. After the project is built, the developer goes out and looks for renters. And those renters are brought on over time. It could be three or four months that it takes to fill up the project. Some projects take a year or a year and a half to fill up. But when the project is 90% full and it is stable, that is the year of stabilized occupancy by definition. So the question that is important to understand is, in order to come up with a definite -- in order to meet the requirements of the definition, return on total cost at stabilized occupancy, we need to understand what the return is in the year of stabilized occupancy. Now, what I assumed is that Mr. Lorden's going through a process where I expect the project will be permitted sometime this year, this calendar year. You will make a decision, you'll render your decision. He will spend some time securing financing. And early in 2015, he'll start construction. And he will -- this is on the first page of the report that I delivered, by the way. In the -- sometime in 2015, he'll start construction. It will take 18 to 24 months to construct the project. And he'll probably do it in phases. He'll probably bring up one or two buildings, start to occupy those one or two buildings, and in parallel, he'll start working on the other buildings, such that by 2017, all the buildings will be built and all the buildings will be occupied. That's a pretty aggressive schedule, I think, but it's a reasonable estimate as to when stabilized occupancy will occur. So the first year of stabilized occupancy is 2017. So the question is, what will the rents be and what will the operating income be in 2017? Just to go back a minute, return on total cost is a formula that takes the total cost of the development, puts it in the denominator of the equation, and the numerator of the equation is how much profit or specifically, what is the net operating revenue of the project in the first year of stabilized occupancy? So you arrive at the net operating income or the profit by looking at the total rents that is collected. You account for some additional cause costs, additional income that may be recovered and account for vacancies, and you deduct from that number the operating cost. What does it cost to provide fuel, electricity, all the fees associated with the project, management of the project? All of those costs are outlined in Mr. Jacobs' pro forma. So he estimates that those costs will increase at a rate of 3% every year from the first year of his numbers. So my interpretation is that in 2017, using his numbers, the net operating income will be as he's projected, and the operating expenses will be as he's projected. Therefore, we know what the numerator is of the equation. It is the net operating income in 2017. And that's listed in the report that I provided. If you look at Appendix B, I'm sorry, Appendix A, you see in 2017, the rental income is 1.66 million. The operating expenses are $820,000. Therefore, the net operating income is $844,000. So that's the numerator of the equation. The denominator of the equation is the total development cost, which is 16-plus million, 16.3 million. Therefore, the return on total cost, as Mr. Jacobs has reported it, is 5.17%. That's the ROTC at stabilized occupancy, is 5.17%. So the question is, is that number, since that's the benchmark that the Housing and Appeals Committee has used to specify, has used to determine whether a project is economic, is that number economic? And the test that they apply is that you take the T-bill rate, the 10-year T-bill rate, and you add 2.5% to it. So the 10-year T-bill rate, when I did this report, was 2.38%, I think it was.
2.38, yeah, on, yeah.
2.38%. So if you add 2.5% to that, the project is economic if it has an ROTC of 4.88%. And this has an ROTC of 5.17% at stabilized occupancy. Therefore, the project is economic. Now, there is -- so if there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. I want to make another point before I turn it over to Mr. Jacobs. There is something very unique about this project that I've never seen before. The definition of an affordable rent is specified by HUD, and it's accepted by DHCD and all the other subsidizing agencies in Massachusetts. The affordable rents in Lunenburg are higher than the market rate rents that Mr. Lorden is proposing for this project. That usually is not the case. Usually, the affordable rents are lower than the market rate rents. So when I looked at this, I tried to make a determination as to whether or not the comps that were being used, what was the sensitivity of the comps? In other words, if he was off by 5% and his comps were 5% too low, what would that do to the project? So I increased arbitrarily, I just arbitrarily increased the rents by 5%. They are still 5% lower than the affordable rents for the area, but I increased them by 5.5%. And if you notice in Appendix B, the ROTC went up to 5.68%.
6.6.
6.8%. So the project is more economic, obviously, if you increase the rents. So I, based upon my analysis, I feel pretty confident that the project is economic at 5.17% the way Mr. Jacobs submitted it. And quite frankly, it's even more economic if you increase the rents by 5%. Now, I talked to Mr. Hill this afternoon, and we looked at some other numbers to just look at some other scenarios. You'll forgive me. You haven't had a chance to see this yet, but let me just pass it out. This updates the report in two ways. First, it looks at the -- wait till you get a copy of it so you can take a look at it. Is there enough there?
Need one more.
Do you have one more, Paul? Take mine, Dan. I got one. The -- what this analysis does, the first thing it does is it updates the T-bill rate. Now, the T-bill rate is supposed to be relatively stable, but in these times, it's been pretty As of yesterday, the T-bill rate went down to 2.28% from 2.38%, which is what it was on October 22nd, October 2nd, when I did my report. And you can see what it's been over the last six months. So it's not at its lowest. It hit its low about a week ago, when it went down to just a little over 2%. But anyways, it's a 2.2%, 2.22 today, and that's favorable to the board. It's important to note that if this is appealed to HAC, it will be what's referred to as a de novo hearing. And the T-bill rates that are in existence on the date of the pre-hearing conference will be the date that determines what the hurdle rate is. And I don't think any of us have any idea what that rate will be, assuming it would be six, eight months, a year from now. But I think it's reasonable to assume it would be higher. It's probably lower, it's probably the lowest it is, it's going to be for the next six months, but that's anybody's guess. The second thing that I did was I said, what happens if we take the rents, if we take the affordable rents and we make them equal to the market rate rents? In other words, the way that performers presented today, the affordable rents are 10% lower than the market rate rents, but the market rate rents are about 10% lower than what the HUD rates allow them to be. So I said, let's just arbitrarily increase the affordable rents equal to the market rate rents, so everything in the project rents at the same price. If you do that, the ROTC for the project at stabilized occupancy comes out at 5.42%, which is, still makes it economic. And as a reference point, the ROTC in year one is 5.02%, which in all cases is greater than the 10-year T-bill rate, plus 2.5%. Now, I've had this discussion with Mr. Jacobs at different times in different projects. And I have to tell you that in the world of 40B, this is a somewhat controversial issue. Even though it's very clear that the Housing and Appeals Committee has said ROTC is the measurement, there are a lot of different opinions as to what should be used to measure the economics of a rental project. There is no question in my mind that the Housing and Appeals Committee has said it's ROTC, but there are other opinions, and the other opinions have some validity to them. But my recommendation to you is that you interpret that this, to use ROTC as the benchmark and that this project is economic with the sewer fees that were proposed by the Sewer Commission.
I'd like to offer a few comments as well. I can't hear you.
Sorry. I would like to offer a few comments as well, just to follow up on what Dick was saying. Dick and I discussed this this afternoon. The main difference between Dick's analysis and Michael Jacobs' analysis is, at what year are they measuring the economic viability of this project? And so Dick's initial report to you was measuring the economic viability in year four, whereas Mr. Jacobs was measuring it at year one. So I think Mr. Jacobs was figuring that year one was basically the first year of occupancy, even though that would probably be in 2017, not 2014. But his rental estimates, the estimated rent, was based upon comps done in 2014. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. And this same issue is coincidentally before the Housing Appeals Committee, in a case that Mr. Haverdy and myself are on opposite sides. It's a case involving the city of Woburn, and Dick is the city's financial consultant. But to the question, there may be an open question of what year you're supposed to measure the economics of a project. Are you supposed to measure it? Well, we know when you're supposed to measure it. You're supposed to measure it in the first year of stabilized occupancy. The open question might be, should those rents that you're assuming in that first year of stabilized occupancy, should those rents be based upon 2014 rents or 2014 rents with inflation to 2017? Now, we know from the developer that this is a four-year build-out, that they've already told us that. So that's why we said 2017 is the operative date. So what Dick has done in his analysis is say, well, the rents in 2017 are going to be, you know, that much higher. And he's actually just using Mike's numbers, because Mike had an inflation factor in there. So that is the big difference between, really, I think, the only difference, between Dick's analysis and Mike's analysis. But because that's an open question, that hasn't been really, that hasn't been addressed by the Housing Appeals Committee, this question of what year you measure the rents. So Dick and I talked about this this afternoon. I said, look, there might be some risk there that we might not prevail in that kind of argument if we had to litigate this, right? So I said, well, why is it that the affordable rents are so much lower than what the state's affordable rents are? In every other 40B project, a developer will show as affordable rents or affordable sale prices, the maximum affordable price that they can get for the affordable unit, because they want to make the most money. They don't discount it voluntarily. But that's what's happening here. The maximum affordable rent that Mr. Lorden could get is 1,077 for a one-bedroom and 1,273 for a two-bedroom. This is using the HUD affordable rents that are based from the MHP website. That is significantly higher than what Mr. Lorden is stating as pro forma for affordable rents, which were 850.
Mr. Lorden used 1,036.
Yeah, 855.
55 and 10.
1035.
1035.
There's no, there's no reason to discount the affordable rents. I looked at the Chapter 40B guidelines that are published by the state, which are controlling here. There's nothing in the 40B guidelines that says you have to discount your affordable rents if they happen to be higher than your market rents. So it doesn't make any sense to discount them. They're entitled to get 1,077 for a one-bedroom unit. Now, recognizing that that, they may not get that in the open marketplace, right? I mean, their argument would be, well, that's all well and good, that that's the maximum rent we can get, but we may not be able to get that because no one will pay it. And then that's what they're going to say. So, fine. But they have said that they will get, for market rents, $950 for a one-bedroom unit. So I think a reasonable position would be to say, if you can get $950 for a market rental unit, you can get $950 for an affordable unit, and that is lower than the maximum amount you can get for an affordable unit. So it's a reasonable position, in my opinion, for the board to say, the affordable rent for a one-bedroom should be 950, and the affordable rent for a two-bedroom should be 1150.
Could I interject one thought?
Sure.
If my numbers are right, if my understanding is right, the number in the entire project is 15 for a one-bedroom. It's a very small number.
15 what?
15 units.
15 units. Oh.
In other words, it's in the whole formula. The mass amount of this is two bedrooms. In other words, in each building, there's only three one-bedrooms, if I understand it correctly.
Right.
And that should affect some of the thought process that we're doing, that you're doing now.
Well, it does, because Dick actually plugged in these numbers. And so that was the last discussion Dick made, was he changed the affordable rents to match the market rents. And the most telling thing here is that even if we take Mr. Jacobs' argument that the, that what you should be looking at is year one, not year four, the number is still 5.02%, which is still higher than the benchmark under Chapter 40B for economics. So that, to me, is the most critical piece of evidence for the board that this project is economic. So I think I support what Dick has done. I think, based upon this analysis, I feel comfortable, I mean, I certainly want to hear what the developer has to say, but at this point, I feel comfortable that the project is economic.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just address the issue with regard to the difference between the rents for the affordable units and the market rate units. That's actually something that's dictated by the subsidizing agency. I've worked on a number of projects where this has occurred, where you've got a situation where a market rate rental is actually either at the affordable rate or even below it, and the subsidizing agency always requires the affordable units to be at least 10% lower. And the reason is because who in their right mind is going to go through the process of getting qualified and on a yearly basis having their income reexamined and requalified to rent a unit at the same price that they could rent it without going through any of that? It's almost impossible to rent an affordable unit at the same price that you're renting a market rate unit in the same building. So that's required by the subsidizing agency, and the best evidence I can give you for that is Gary's project over in Townsend, where he's done the exact same thing. The affordable units are rented at 10% less than the market rate units. So this is not just something that's being applied to this pro forma for a way to make it seem like it's making less profit than it isn't. There is no situation where we would get final approval stating that we are going to rent the affordable units at the same price as the market rate units. It would just never happen. And I've dealt with this on a number of different projects.
What, Mr. Haverdy, you haven't cited any regulation, there's nothing. The Chapter 40B regulations say nothing to that. They say, what is the maximum rent you can charge?
I've cited you a real-world example.
But it's not law.
I can show you the regulatory documents.
The board can't make decisions based on your representations of what happens in the real world.
Two points, Mr. Haverdy. We asked for a project eligibility letter on this project, and you said we didn't need one. But that typically is one of the items that's addressed in the PE letter. Number two, I don't believe Mass Housing has that policy. I know MHP has that policy, but I've not seen it in writing from Mass Housing.
Well, the Townsend project was a Mass Housing project.
I haven't seen it in writing.
I can certainly send it to you. I can get something from Greg Watson at Mass Housing to state exactly that. And Mike certainly has a lot of experience with this issue, and he can speak to it as well if he wants.
Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
Since you're comparing it to the Townsend project.
Yep.
What are the rents you're talking about right now for a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
I believe Mike's already prepared to speak to that issue, so I'll let him come up.
For the record, I'm Mike Jacobs, MHJ Associates, and this is going to be the DeKeaton Mike Jacobs Roadshow, which we do throughout the Commonwealth. This is really just my presentation for the record, but I'm just going to go through this. Thank you. So Dan and Dick have done a good job sort of highlighting some of the discrepancies or differences of opinion that we have. And I know Dan is comfortable with that, and so my goal, I guess, is to make you more uncomfortable after my presentation, Dan. So I want to talk about three items. One is the Housing Appeals Committee standard. Two is how one calculates the return on total cost. And three is how we get about projected rents. Now, as Mr. Heaton pointed out, there is controversy and a lack of clarity right now about what the economic return should be. And the state is looking at those issues, but has yet not issued any guidance for us. So we're in a little gray area right now. The MHP guidelines were drafted in 2005, nine years ago, very different economy. And they used the 10-year Treasury bill because it was a very good measure of, not a no-risk, a very limited-risk measurement. And upon that, they add risk factors, because there are different risk factors in a project. The risk of permitting, which I think Mr. Lorden has experienced quite well here, the risk of construction, finding site problems, fire chief coming in and adding issues, and the risk of operations. Doesn't get the rents as high, operating expenses are higher because utility costs are unprojected. So there's a lot of risk. And the guidelines were created to try and say, here's a base level of return, and how much do you add to that to determine risk? One big difference between the economy today and then is the Federal Reserve has been, as everyone knows, buying Treasury bills, the process called quantitative easing. And the result of that is it has artificially depressed the T-bill. It is really difficult to use that as a metric today. I served on advisory group to MHP when they drafted the guidelines. And one clarification, the guidelines are not 250 basis points above the 10-year Treasury. They're 250 to 350 basis points. We put in that range because, you know, different projects, different economics, so it's 250 to 350 basis points. That's one issue. The metric on return on total cost, I agree with Dick. The Housing Appeals Committee has accepted that as the primary way to look at economics. Many of us would say there are other ways, but that's what the world is, so let's go with that. The thing that's sort of striking, however, is when you, you would think that there would be some correlation between that measurement and other types of measurement of economic return. And I just wanted to talk to you about the cash-on-cash return, understanding that that's not what the Housing Appeals Committee would use, but I hate to, we're going to have reality come into this just for a second. Cash-on-cash return is simply how much a developer puts in, in cash, and that could be cash, it could be land value, which the bank gives him credit for, which he keeps in the deal, it could be developer fee, which he's entitled to, which he doesn't take out and keeps in the deal. When you look at the cash put in and the cost and the return, it's 2.8% in year one and 4.3% even in year five. Now, I don't know how many of you, given sort of the risk factors I just talked about, would take your money and put it into a fairly risky proposition for those levels of return. Now, the calculation on return on total cost, I think sort of one of the biggest issues is the issue of what year you should use. I spent 10 years as the head of lending at Mass Housing and have probably closed several hundred million dollars of loans in the last couple of years. And it is standard to build a cushion in to the affordable rents. For one, the reason that Paul mentioned. The other is what we call a marketing window. If the rents are set at the maximum, typically, management companies, the rents are set at 30% of a set income, and that's how they calculate the rent. If your income isn't close to the top of that range, you're starting to pay a lot more than 30%. And a management company, when a tenant applicant would come to them, would look and see, if And a management company, when a tenant applicant would come to them, would look and see, if you're approaching 40% of income that you have to pay, red flag in terms of renting. So as you sort of shrink that window, you also shrink the number of people who qualify for your project. Lenders and investors, when you have affordability, don't want market risk.
This is in the sale of property, right?
What?
In other words, the purchase to become a property owner. Am I listening right here?
The...
In other words...
I'm sorry, could you just...
Are we talking about rental?
Rental.
Are we talking about purchase of property?
Rental.
I just want to be sure I'm understanding.
Yes. Well, you know, Mr. Lorden's going to put, and has put probably, you know, over seven figures of his own dollars into this project. He's going to look at the income stream that he gets and compare that to what he's put in, you know, and it may not be much more than, you know, a long-term CD. So that's what I was talking about with cash-on-cash return. I think one of the biggest issues, though, is the year that you look at. As a lender, we always take current rents and current operating expenses. We will trend out those rents and operating expenses. But in terms of looking at the issues we're looking at, we use year one and assume that stabilized occupancy. And the reason we do that is, the reason that, in fact, one of the reasons that the Housing Appeals Committee doesn't use some other metrics like internal rate of return, and I quote from one decision, and since Dan, you know, was giving you numbers, I feel I should be able to quote legal case law here. It's the Baywatch Realty Trust versus the Marion Board of Appeals. It said, while recognizing the internal rate of return, which is a measure that looks at all these rents and expenses over time, they reject a future-oriented analysis because much of that information is based on approximate, is approximate, and because timing is important. So they basically said, let's stay away from that. Let's deal with concrete numbers today. And the other problem is, how can you take 2017 rents and a measurement of return with today's T-bill? We'd have to somehow project a Treasury bill to 2017 to do that measurement. We can't do that. That's why you have to be consistent. You have to look at comparables today, operating expenses today, and the T-bill today. That's the only way you can do this, plain and simple. In terms of rental comparables, I looked at, I particularly focused on two comparables and why I don't think we should be having any 5% increase in rents. Emerald Place at Wayland Park, at Lake Wayland, is a luxury condominium project, which is also renting units. And it is a very different project than what Mr. Lorden is talking about for a couple of reasons. One, they only have two-bedroom units, they have two bedrooms, they have two baths, the square footage is larger, the units come with one garage parking space, the project has private beach access. If you look at the proposed rents on Lunenburg Village, add in the garage for $100 that Gary would charge on his project, there's then a $100 difference between the starting rent at Wayland Park and this project. Given those differentials in terms of the amenities, unit sizes, garage, it's easily worth $100. Turnpike Village, as we talked about, is Gary's project in Townsend. So how do you compare Townsend and Lunenburg? Lunenburg is a more affluent community, it has higher median sales prices. So I looked at the median sale home value in Lunenburg versus the median home value in Townsend, and there's about a 4.5% difference. The proposed rents at Lunenburg Village, when compared to Townsend, the one-bedrooms are over 15% higher, and the two-bedrooms are 12% higher. One other thing about this problem with how low our affordable rents or our market rents are, the HUD calculation of affordability is tied to income. It has nothing to do with what the market is. It looks at the median incomes for an area and says, based on that, 80% of median income is this, 50% is that, and we'll take 30% of that, and that becomes the affordable rent. Once you start getting outside of Boston, and as you go further west, you find that it's pretty common to have market rents below the HUD affordable rents. And again, one thing I was saying before was, whether you're an investor, and I do a lot of projects with tax credits where investors come in, or you're a lender, you want, you do not want to have market risk for your affordable units. You want to know that those are certain. And when that affordable unit is the same as the market unit, as Paul aptly put it, you have a problem. So I would contend that you really need to look at today's rent, and you really need to think about not just a 250-basis-point spread, but the 350-basis-point spread, which this project would fail to meet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
One comment, please.
Mr. Chairman, it strikes me that it's kind of ironic that if the market rents are lower than the affordable rents in Lunenburg, then why is there a need for affordable housing in Lunenburg? I mean, isn't that Exhibit A for the lack of a need for affordable housing if you can already rent an apartment in this town for the same price as what you're proposing for affordable rents?
Well, now you're dealing with reality, and I'll deal with 40B regulations.
Mike, that actually goes to my point, though, and I hear you, and I don't disagree at all with what you're saying about reality. But the problem is that we have to live by these regulations. A lot of the regulations that we're dealing with today were adopted in reaction to the state feeling that the towns were going too far afield in regulating these projects. The MHP guidelines were a product of, I think, disagreements that the state was having and housing advocates were having with conditions that the zoning boards were putting on comprehensive permits back in the early 2000s. You know, the question of snapshot, I mean, looking at the rents in 2014, but looking at first year of stabilized occupancy, which is four years later or three years later, I agree, it doesn't make sense, but these are the rules that are in place. And, you know, frankly, we've been told by the courts in the Amesbury case, which Paul's familiar with, that we can't change the rules, we can't fudge the rules when it comes to affordability, we have to work with what's given to us. And so you may disagree with the application of the rules in this case, but is it our place to be changing those rules in the middle of the game? To me, it seems kind of unfair that we would have to change the rules to accommodate a project so it makes more money.
First of all, there's no rule that says that the affordable rent has to be set at the highest possible calculation. Okay?
But the board could not dictate a lower rent. We couldn't say to you, we want you to provide rents...
But that's not what's happening here. What we have is a pro forma that is based upon the rent that reality shows we'll be able to charge. I mean, we could put in a pro forma that we're going to get 2,000 per market-rate unit, because there's no law that says we can't charge 2,000 per market-rate unit, but reality tells us we're not going to get anywhere near that.
Right.
And it's the same thing on the rentals. Reality tells us that if we're renting a one-bedroom market-rate at 950, we are not going to be able to rent that same unit as an affordable unit at 950. Therefore, there has to be some change made. And with regard to whether or not that indicates there's a need for affordable housing, I think what it does point out is that perhaps the way that they do the statistical mean area and determine, you know, what is affordable rent is not necessarily right. Perhaps there should be a little bit more of micro areas rather than using really large areas for determining affordability rates.
Well, this is, when you go into the HUD database, you can pinpoint Town of Lunenburg. So it's the number...
But that's not how they're set. You can correct me if I'm wrong. They're set on statistical mean.
You know, there are some oddities to the how HUD establishes them. A couple of years ago, I do probably more work for boards than I do for developers. I was consulting to the Franklin Board. And Franklin, for some reason, the Boston SNSA comes and sort of encircles Franklin. But if you look at the rents in Franklin are a hell of a lot lower than the rest of the Boston. Why HUD did that, you know, we can't explain. But, and I could not explain the full methodology of why Lunenburg is in one area and not in another area. You know, Andover is in the Lawrence area, its market rents, you know, are way higher, but go to some of the other communities around there. And getting to the 80% rent in Lawrence would be well, the market rent there would be well below. It's pretty common.
That establishes the Title V payout to the various towns depending upon where you live, I would guess.
I guess the other thing is, I'm not clear, and you two can, you know, disagree about this, that anyone has defined stabilized occupancy as you're defining in terms of 2017. Maybe there is a case that, but I'm not aware of that. And it seems to me, if this goes to the HAC, you're going to bring in more experts, you're going to bring in appraisers, who are going to do what I'm doing in much, much more detail, and you'll have the same argument. The point is, I think there's more, there isn't as certainty as much as Mr. Heaton, an attorney, he'll say about this project being economic if you just need to go to the Housing Appeals Committee.
Particularly when you factor in the 350-basis-point standard, which is in the MHP guidelines, which the HAC has not ruled on that issue since, in the last five or six years, since the rates have dropped to these historically low areas. So it's still an open question as to whether or not the HAC would continue to use the 2.5% it has used as a default in the past, or whether it would look at the existing reality and apply the 3.5%. That is an issue that is certainly in front of them in the Woburn case that we're dealing with. That'll be tried next month.
If it's cutting to the chase a little bit, the issue that's in front of us right now is suggested that the applicant is not, can't make it affordable if the sewer fees get...
We've sort of lost track of that.
At the level that's proposed, yes.
It seems to me this is where we're at tonight.
Correct.
It seems to me. I may be wrong, but we may go another place, who knows? But the $400,000 is said, and that's all we can pay. And then you look to the sewer commission, and they have a model that they establish from a cost payback, what it cost initially for the system, how many users are going to go on the line, how much debt they would have to get in, and what methodology they use to do the payback and therefore establish the rate of it would cost per connection. And then when you get to apartments, one could say, you know, I'm kind of a guy that liked to cut to the chase and say, okay, we get a difference, so we're 1.2 and we're 400. I like it, it's $800,000, and let's go home. But then if you look at the sewer commission's problems, if you take, one could turn around, I've listened around to the neighborhood, and someone says that, oh, if you got a three-decker, it's, you know, two bedrooms each, well, that's one betterment. I don't know where that comes from, but I think it's kind of a wish list and say, you got to get that individual cost, it's so heavy. Someone wants to turn around and tie into the sewer, and you get a four-apartment house. Well, in order to get in, based on what was structured and necessary for the sewer department to satisfy their debt before they have to transfer that debt onto other people, I don't know how it ends. It would take that person that comes in, could be $100,000, some number like that. In other words, you get the 12, $1,400 times four, and connection fees and other things. So I guess getting back to where I'm starting from, to get unfocused to what's here, you're saying, we can't afford it, but let's make the Town of Lunenburg afford it.
Well, if I could take a trip back to Memory Lane, because I researched a little bit about what the sewer department had told us last week to find out, because a lot of it didn't make sense to me. And what they had told us was, their original costs were $13 million, and that $13 million was dispersed over 1,000 homes. Well, at that point, they dispersed those fees to pay the $13 million over those 1,000 homes.
And you happened to come in line with 150 of those.
No, oh, no. At the time, my property was assessed, I think it's four or five.
No, I mean now.
But no, let me, if I could just finish.
Okay, go ahead.
They have already billed out to cover that debt service of 13 million over the 1,000 homes. And at that time, they did not anticipate extra properties or more, like Emerald Place, coming online and adding more. Tri-City Drive-In, name of the project escapes me, but having another 240, whatever the number was there, coming online. They didn't estimate us turning our project into an affordable project and adding an additional, probably 115 or 16 units to what they assessed the property at originally. So all those were added to it. And so they're saying that those numbers being added, even new homes and new lots being developed, at no time does it drop the number down for their cost. So to me, it would imply it being a fee, but I don't, again, I don't want to talk legal jargon because I'm not qualified to do that. But, so I checked with the Leominster Sewer Department, and I checked with the billing department in Lunenburg. And what they told us was that they gave a break, because we talked about unfair treatment to projects. And they said that Emerald Place, I don't, Paul could state the numbers more clearly than I, but I know it was, they said so much went to Leominster, so much went to Lunenburg.
It's a special animal, isn't it, to bring into this conversation?
It's a special animal, but what they had told me was, is because they were hooked onto Leominster, where the sewer terminates is in the town road of Lunenburg, not even close to Leominster. When I say not even close, it's not on the property line. And then I checked with Leominster, and they said that they don't maintain those lines, they don't service those lines, and they don't bill Emerald Place. So I checked with Lunenburg, and 100% of the occupants of...
Just cut in for a second. Wes is all set to go, all right? We don't need him anymore tonight?
Pardon?
Wes, do we need any more? Okay. I figured I'd see Gary a couple of hours.
And 100% of the occupants...
You're going home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you, Wes.
I'm good.
But 100% of the occupants in Emerald Place pay their sewer fees to the Town of Lunenburg and not to Leominster. And I was just confused as to why, at the time, and they're not here tonight, so it's probably not fair to ask the question.
But I can tell you one thing. I grew up in Wayland. My parents were on Wayland. I have friends up on Kirby, I have different avenues. They had sewerage. We did not. We were on the other side of Wayland Road. So there was existing sewerage, and I'm talking in 1949, '50. So they had existing sewerage in the Wayland area that also extended into Wayland Park.
It ran from Kirby right through Wayland Park over to Lakefront.
Correct.
And that was torn out. And then they reconnected. The only one that, the only part that they added back on to Lakefront was eight units, which they're constructing right now, eight single units. And that goes to Lakefront over here. The others went further down towards the traffic light in Lunenburg. They didn't go over to Kirby anymore. That got cut off. So they brought it further down the line, because I looked at the plans, I went in and looked at all the plans. But even so...
But they still have sewerage on Kirby, so where did that come from, if you're saying they got lost?
Well, I'm saying Emerald Place didn't go back to Kirby.
No, no, because they don't own that property.
No, but it was, it went from Kirby right through Wayland Park over to Lakefront. They tore that all out. And then they went down and tied further down towards Lunenburg, and they tied further down over there. But I guess that's a question to ask the sewer department. I don't know.
Mr. Ebersah would like to say something, so we'll let him, courtesy.
Yes, Robert Ebersol, 94 Main Street, member of Board of Selectmen, chairman of the Sewer Commission, after Emerald Place but before this current development. I was chair at the time of the application. Two things that are incorrect. When the betterments were assessed for the town, the entire project was not assessed to all the existing users. There was a reserve for future development that was going to tie into these pipes, and that's why we call it a privilege fee instead of a betterment. So we did not take the cost and put it over 1,000 units. We put it over what the development would be. We reserved the charge that was going to go to future developments. We did not assess that. But we still have the debt for the full amount. The original people did not, are not the ones that are paying for the entire amount. Secondly, regarding Emerald Place, you have to talk about not users, you have to talk about the betterment of the property. The property of Emerald Place, a portion of it had sewerage on it and... The property of Emerald Place, a portion of it had sewerage on it and could have been built with that capacity, not needing to come through the town of Lunenburg. So therefore, it would be illegal for the town of Lunenburg to assess a betterment on that portion of the property because they already had access. So therefore, a determination was, was made to assess a betterment for the properties that would not have been able to tie into that. Then, on a technical process, they determined that it was better to put it through a different pipe, but it still allocated the betterments based on what the improvements of the property were, based on the increased capacity. So that's the, the two items regarding that.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The, the reserve that you talked about, I think Mr. Luck mentioned, I don't have the figure in front of me. That was like 3.5 million?
I, I think it's approximately that amount. That was not assessed in the original betterment assessments.
So the, the original cost of 13 million was never paid off?
It's still, it's a, it's a 30-year debt that's being paid over 30 years, so we've been less than 10 years now, so we have 20.
And if the end of the 30 years, if you haven't loaded up, what happens?
Then, then according to Mr. Luck, and since we've moved to an enterprise fund, the users at that time would be paying it. Now, whether the question becomes whether it comes back to the town, because the town did the project originally, and whether you could make an equitable decision to say that the property owner shouldn't have to pay it when the town made the decision who should take that risk. But eventually, even after the debt, that privilege fee should be assessed at whatever development that comes through the process. Whether it's before the debt's paid off or after the debt's paid off, it will be collected. The question becomes who has to pay the debt within the, the next 20, 25 years of the debt service.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Troy Daniels. I currently sit on the Sewer Commission. And there was a comment made about something that was told to Mr. Lorden by the Sewer Commission last week, and I just had a question about that. There have been three meetings that, that he was scheduled to appear and hasn't appeared. So I don't know what we might have told him that he was quoting us on at the Sewer Commission. Because there was nothing quoted to him last week from the Sewer Commission.
I think he said he was working on it last week. I don't think he said he was-
Yeah, I'm, I was confused about that, but it stayed.
They want to clarify.
Just, just for the record, so the board knows, I've never been invited or on the schedule for the Sewer Department and missed three meetings. But to go-
We did attend.
We attended.
Two or three meetings of the Sewer Commission.
And, and when I'm talking, I'm talking about the last meeting here, when Kyle was speaking at the meeting as well. And, but again, it, to rebut what they had said, if there was an overage of 3 million that is to be assessed at future development, my project would encompass 50% of that bill or 10% of the total project. And none of that seems to be a fair number. And if, if there's a precedent set that it's okay to tie into the neighboring cities like Leominster, I, I truly abut the Leominster line. So I'm able to either purchase a property or obtain an easement to go to Leominster if they'll allow me to do that, or in the case with the tri-town, where they allowed the applicant to cross over Lunenburg Town property, down Lunenburg Town roads, go down until they reach the Fitchburg line, and then tie into Fitchburg so that they could not pay the Lunenburg fees, which I don't understand that either, so that they could pay the fees in Fitchburg, then obviously, if it would be all right, we might not even have to discuss this if everybody's okay with me going through-
That might be your first choice.
To go through Leominster.
A hell of a deal.
Sure. Or if I'm able to come, if I'm able to come down the road-
It would appear to me that the Lunenburg Sewer Commission wouldn't mind that.
They may, they may not, but as he mentioned last week-
Because if you weren't there, if you're gone, it would never happen.
At the last meeting, they seemed to be hesitant because they would lose fees and funds.
I believe Mr. Luck stated that that was not possible anymore. They had talked to Leominster and-
That is correct.
That is correct.
What Mr. Luck stated was that was no longer possible with Fitchburg, because they had entered into an agreement with Fitchburg.
Excuse me. I believe he said that.
At the last meeting of the Sewer Commission.
Excuse me, excuse me. You gotta work through the chair.
I'm sorry.
And you can't interfere, you can't have a little common discussion there. So if you're recognized, then we'll let you talk, but we're not going to let you talk out of order. Go ahead.
Who's going?
You're first.
Okay, thank you.
You're last talking, before you cut off.
At the last meeting, Mr. Luck stated that after that had happened with the tri-town and Fitchburg, that they had entered into an agreement with, with Fitchburg that would not allow that to happen again. However, he did not state that with regard to Leominster, that we specifically discussed that at the last meeting.
I believe he stated that at the previous hearing, and then at the next hearing, the last hearing, he stated that he had talked to Leominster, and they said that that would not be allowed.
I remember, I remember that as well, whether, whether it was said at a meeting or in a separate conversation.
I believe it was.
Let's ask the Sewer Commission, they're here.
That is correct. At the last Sewer Commission meeting, Mr. Luck stated that he had spoken with Leominster, and they would not allow that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just in response to the fairness question, you know, Mr. Lorden makes an argument that it's unfair that his project would bear the brunt of picking up the additional 3 million or whatever the number is of the unassessed betterment charges. And I think Mr. Luck said at a previous meeting that once that additional money has been raised through privilege fees, then the privilege fee assessments would end. Now, that does seem unfair, but that's the law. We have to implement the law. We can't make exceptions to the law. If the law's unfair, the law's unfair. And I would remind Mr. Lorden and Mr. Haverty that the law of Chapter 40B has been incredibly unfair to the town of Lunenburg with respect to the Hollis Hills project. So the laws are the laws, they're unfair, they're fair, and we have to deal with them.
Well, it seemed to me that the affordability issue is the issue at hand. That, and then the burden is, wants to be pushed, because the cost does exist, as you say, in law. And it would seem to me that if a project of an independent contractor were to build the same thing next to you, that he would pay 1.2 million, that's what he'd pay, or he wouldn't do it. Is that correct? Because it's the law, it's the way it is. In other words, an exact same replica comes down the street right next to them.
Yeah.
So here, we're looking for relief to make it profitable, but the new builder can't duck that 1.2 million.
Right, exactly. That, that's a very good analogy, Mr. Chairman. So the issue is not fairness, the issue is economics. And that's what we should be focusing on. Is this uneconomic?
Well, and we, of course, still reserve our rights with regard to the 40B issues in terms of when the privilege fee was adopted and the decision in the Hollis Hills ruling, questioning whether or not, in fact, it was in place as of the time that this project was filed. I mean, that's a separate issue, and we can deal with that at the appropriate time.
Comments? Dick?
Well, I just-
You've been quiet too long.
I, I just want to bare my soul, if I could, just for a minute. Mike made a comment that we've gone through this before in different communities than we have. I do take objection to one thing he said. In my mind, this definition of economic, there is absolute clarity. Doesn't mean it can change, but there is absolute clarity as to what the definition of economic is. It is a minimum of 2.5% above the T-bill rate, ROTC at stabilized occupancy. And until the Housing and Appeals Committee, or DHCD, or someone else changes that, that is the rule. That's the law. That's what, that's what this board has to, has to implement. And it's not fair of you to ask the town to make a separate hearing, a separate finding that's different than the way Mr. Hill and I are interpreting the law. This board is bound to implement 40B the way they understand it and the way they're advised to. And I have not heard an argument that states it should be any different.
Okay. With all due respect, Dick, the MHP guidelines specifically state that the standard is 2.5% to 3.5% above the 10-year T-bill. That's an issue that is currently in front of the Housing-
I have a car that I want to sell you between $2,000 to $3,000. How much do you want to pay for it?
The guidelines say exactly what they say.
I understand, but the, but there's no definitive definition to, there's no definition as to what's the difference between 2.5% and 3.5%.
I completely agree with that.
Except to under, except to understand that there are different situations, there are different investors. As an individual, I can only assume that is the lower rate until I'm presented evidence as to why it should be higher.
Well, and again, the evidence that we have presented is that due to quantitative easing, the 10-year T-bill rate is at historic lows, significantly lower than it was at the time that the MHP guidelines were put in place.
You're arguing it should be a different, a different metric.
No, no. What I am arguing is that there was a range put in place in the, in the MHP guidelines for a reason. And the reason is because even at that time, they recognized 2.5% as a fixed number would not always be appropriate. What, what circumstance could be more appropriate for using that range? And I understand you're a little bit constrained here, because we've got the Woburn case coming up, just like I'm constrained, because I want the 3.5%, you want the 2.5% in that instance. But I, I don't think it's at all unfair of us to be making this argument. I think it's a very reasonable argument to make. We are at historic lows on the 10-year Treasury. Any HAC case that you actually will take a look at and say, what was the number that was found to be uneconomic? There is not a single HAC case that is economic at the number that you're saying this project is economic. Forget about comparing it to the 10-year T-bill. I'm talking about the actual return on total cost figure. There's not one. You cannot point to an HAC case that finds a return on total cost under 5% to be economic. It, it's just, it's not reasonable to think that it would be. I mean, the, the risk involved with doing a project of this expense to, to have a return that low is just, it's not realistic.
Well, the guidelines are the guidelines.
Exactly.
I'd like to try and bring this to some kind of, not, not so many multiple choices, but just a few. And I'd like to go to Dan Hill. Well, I'd like to propose, and I promised myself I wouldn't, but I did once already, and I guess I gotta do it again. Intellectually, I think that we should go to the best data and go with it and take it down, and if that requires going to the courts, to go to the courts. But my gut is, we're $400,000 to 1.2 million. I like 800,000. Everybody bleeds a little. But I don't know if this board should make the town bleed at all in a Part B project. And I'd like your comment and our attorney's comments, Dick, to straighten me out.
Would you like me to begin?
Go ahead.
I certainly understand-
You'd like 800,000?
I, well, it's not my money, so sure, I'd like to reach an agreement. I mean, I'm, I'm an attorney, I like, you know, I like to reach compromise. You know, but that's obviously up to Gary. I understand the board's reluctance here. It's, it's a big thing that we are asking. And it's not an easy position to be in. In fact, I had the same situation come in front of the board that I sit on, where we were asked to waive sewer fees on a project, which we did. And that was an instance where there was a lot of concern by the different board members with regard to the impact on municipal finances. So I understand that. Realistically, if this project doesn't go forward and doesn't connect, no privilege fee of any sort is going to come in on the town coffers, and that delta of what's left to cover is going to have to be covered some other way as well. So it's not, and it's not an instance where, you know, the, the costs that are going to be associated to this town for the sewer as a result of this project are going to be higher than what the revenues are going to be. I don't think anyone's making that argument. The argument really is sort of the flip side of the fairness, which is other people have already paid connection fees, betterment fees, privilege fees, so why shouldn't this project? And I understand that, you're sort of at a visceral level. But we already heard testimony from Chairman Luck at the last hearing, in which he stated that irrespective of what's going to be paid in privilege fees, this project is going to have a positive impact on the rates for the other rate payers. Because the more users you have, he didn't necessarily say you could lower the rates, but he said is that you could keep them from rising a little more quickly. It's going to help that. He, he stated that to you. So, I mean, there is a benefit to this, to the town for this project coming in and connecting to the sewer system, paying some number. And it doesn't, and it doesn't necessarily mean that there's 1.5 million.
If you could put it all down the road there and skip the town, we wouldn't have a problem, would we? That would be nice. Everybody would be happy.
Well, if I could, if I could address that issue, again, I didn't hear any statement stating that there's an actual agreement in place preventing that. I heard a statement made that the town of Leominster was contacted, and they indicated they wouldn't allow a connection. If that's the case, then that's the case. We certainly, if, if this board is not going to budge at all with regard to fees, at minimum, we'd like that option to be able to, to make that request of the town of Leominster. And they'll do what they do. And then, then at that point, we'll be left in a situation whether we have to file an appeal of whatever decision this board issues, or whether we, you know, can successfully connect in Leominster.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hill.
In the last-
Is that heresy when I'm talking here?
No, not at all, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure Mr. Jacobs would, would attest that Chapter 40B is, is a negotiation, it's a compromise, and, and it, the state favors compromises. So that's, that's reasonable. But I guess a question I had was, in, in the month that we've had since between the last two hearings, have you guys approached Leominster about connecting to their system and asked them if it's viable?
I haven't had that conversation with them, no.
Okay.
You have looked into the cost, right?
I've looked into the cost.
I mean, my understanding is that we weren't intending to close tonight anyhow. That certainly could be an issue we could investigate further before the next hearing.
I, I don't think, I don't think anyone in the town wants you to explore that. I'm just asking if you have.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, you know, I, I think we've heard testimony from, from all sides. You know, I, I've acknowledged upfront that I think the law is, is a little bit unclear in terms of when you measure the date, or when you, when you, at what date do you look at the rents, the, you know, the, the, the market rents and the affordable rents? So I think there's an open question there. So there may be some risk of taking a position that we are suggesting, but, and I also, I think Mr. Haverty makes a decent argument that-
Can we rewind that and play that again?
Save that for Woburn, right? The 2.5%.
Watch the video.
I agree, it's a range. It's, it's not a minimum. I don't, I don't think Dick was saying it was a minimum. It, it's 2.5% to 3.5% above T-bill rate. The fact that the T-bill rate is, is at historic lows, that stinks. You know, again, that's the rules. We didn't set the rules, the rules are set for us. And the rules say that's, that's what you apply, so we're applying them. But Dick's analysis, if you assume that the 2017 number is correct, which I think we have a reasonable basis for, for making that assumption, and you bring the, the affordable rents up to the, the market rents, they're within that range, you're within the 2.5% to 3.5% above T-bill rate. So I, I'm still comfortable with our position. I recognize that there may be some differences. I recognize that the rules could change. There's a history in 40B of rules changing out from underneath our feet, particularly as it affects municipalities. So it wouldn't surprise me if somebody comes along and adopts a rule that says affordable rate rents always have to be 10% lower, even though I don't agree with it. Because in my mind, it's indicative of a lack of a housing need. If you have to arbitrarily lower or artificially lower your affordable rents because they're, they're too high, doesn't that tell you something? Doesn't that tell you that there isn't an affordable housing need in the town? But unfortunately, that issue's been decided for us by the SJC and Hollis Hills. So that's where we're at, Mr. Chairman. I think it'd be great if we could find some common ground and a compromise on the sewer fee issue and avoid litigation.
Dick, would you get any comment here? But you, you, see, what bothers me is I think Dick, in his pro-farmer, did a hell of a job, a lot of it, put things in focus for me, I could understand, because after all, I'm not in your kind of business, and I could get confused pretty easy. But he put it in, articulated it in very clear and understandable, which drove me But he put it in, articulated it in very clear and understandable, which drove me to a point of my 800,000, to, I think Dick's right, we should carry it down the line, and if we need to go to court, let's go to court and let someone else figure it out. And I got to that point. And I re-asked Dick the question, your thoughts on the matter?
Well, historically, as Dan mentioned, these issues are resolved through negotiation. Now, I haven't, I think the approach that you've taken, Mr. Chairman, of throwing another number on the table, is worthy of discussion, but quite frankly, it involves more than the board. It involves the selectmen, and it involves the sewer commissioners. If you decide, and the reason is that if you decide to reduce the rate that the sewer commissioners are entitled to, they're going to look for the town to make up that difference.
Yeah.
Or they're going to go back to the selectmen and talk about it. So, an approach, if you do want to consider something different than the regulations provide, I would suggest get the selectmen and the sewer commissioners and the zoning board to sit down and look at the facts and make a determination as to what's a reasonable approach. If this goes to court, if this goes to the Housing and Appeals Committee, I would expect the town would probably spend $100,000 to $200,000 defending their case. And it would go to lawyers and people like me, which is not what you want. It's in the best interests of the town to make a reasonable compromise that makes everybody unhappy, but at least it's acceptable to the group. And I think, I would recommend that if that, if the board is inclined to do that, you take the steps to have a working session with the selectmen, the sewer commissioners, and discuss this.
You do that independent of the applicant?
You could involve the applicant if you felt it was reasonable, but I think the first discussion ought to be independent of the applicant, so that you could sort out some of your own issues.
Can we have a meeting like that?
As long as you don't have a quorum, you can.
You want to comment?
Not on this, just something that Dan had said, but go ahead. Well, he's on a roll, I want him to finish his thought.
Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt.
Okay.
So as long as we didn't have a quorum, they can't have a quorum either, right?
The sewer commissioners or the selectmen cannot have a quorum, right? Do you want to...
Can I ask one question?
Do you want to comment on the working session, Dan? Is that...
I'm not, I mean, I'm not really sure why the selectmen need to be involved. Can you clarify what the, is it more of a, just a political reasoning? I mean, I think, you know, if we're going to go with a number that isn't grounded in some...
I agree.
...reality, I'd want to have an agreement with the developer that they're not going to appeal this, they're not going to appeal this. And that's going to be, that'll be a separate document from the conference of permit itself. So if that's, yeah, I think we should have buy-in from the chief elected official of the town on that, if that's the approach the board wants to take. But that doesn't have to be decided tonight, and I think what the board should hear tonight, perhaps from Mr. Lorden, is whether or not he's receptive to some sort of compromise between the 400,000 he's willing to pay and the 1.4 million, not 1.2, but 1.4 million that the sewer commissioner has.
1.2, I thought it was.
It's 1.2 in privilege fees.
900,000.
Plus another 200 in connection.
See, the longer you talk, the higher it goes.
Well, like I say, I say, that's my gut, my intellectuals doesn't...
Interest is running.
It crosses over one thing. Every decision this board makes, and I've been here for 30 years, and I don't have no idea why, but the, when they take us, drag us into court, we've always been arbitrary and capricious, that's the words. And here we are on the front end being arbitrary. I don't know where that stands.
But the standard on the 40B is actually consistent with local needs, not arbitrary and capricious, so you're good.
There you go.
Well, I would want there to be a contract signed. If we decide to do something like this, I'd want there to be a contract.
Be a what?
I would want there to be a contract, just because of the reason you just stated. I don't want to come up with an arbitrary number.
Oh, yeah.
And have that vulnerable to challenge.
We've been down that road a couple of times.
Can I ask a question? I had asked earlier about, you know, you guys wanted to talk reality and real failures and real projects, and you mentioned Townsend. And I know I had asked what the actual rent is at for a one-bedroom in Townsend, and the actual rent for a two-bedroom in Townsend. And since you brought up the Emerald Plates, I'd like to know them, if you know them as well.
On a two-bedroom, we're 10.25. And on a one-bedroom, we're 8.25.
For market.
For market. The market's a 10.25 and 8.25. But if I could just...
What about the affordables?
Affordable, affordable, in here.
In Townsend.
Oh, in Townsend. Townsend is 10% lower. The rate's 10% lower than, so it's 10% less than the 10.25 and 10% less than the 8.25.
Hey, by the way, it would occur to me that if we did have a meeting of the minds, hopefully, and the sewer department wouldn't accrete through some other number, it would seem to me that based on the evidence that's in front of us, then this board might end up in an area that you wouldn't like us to be, and we could then have to test the case, I would think, in the end, because they've got to come to a meeting of the minds both ways, but if one polarizes, there's no way to talk.
Right.
Unless you say that this board can ram it down everybody's throat, simply by the power that it has in this case of saying it's 900,000. I don't know where that is.
You're picking out a number. But if you took...
I wanted him to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Well, I am, I mean, I think, I think you've articulated what our options are. I mean, it's either litigation if they don't accept it, and then Dick said, you know, we know what the costs are going to be of the litigation, there's some uncertainty, and there's some certain costs. And the alternative is to, or one alternative is to basically accept their arguments and only charge a $400,000 sewer fee, or we find some middle ground and hedge our risks a little bit more. That's an option as well. And this is all options we can discuss in deliberation when we get to that point.
Okay.
If I could just, I want to leave the board with a point, and I want them to think about this, because what Dan and Dick have, are hanging their hat on, is the fact that, to say that rents are going to increase by 3%, and you can extrapolate and bring that up in the year 2017 and make that the fixed point. The reality is, I own properties, rental properties, I've had them for approximately seven years, and we've gone up 0% each year in seven years. So my reality is thinking is, I don't think anything is going to change from what has happened the last seven years, to say that I'm going to increase 3% on my rentals each year. I would love it if I could, but let's just assume that that is correct, and I can. Making that assumption, why on earth would you take the lowest T-bill, 10-year T-bill, that is artificially pushed down by quantitative easing, and make the assumption that it's going to stay fixed at that rate all the way to the year 2017? If you're going to make the assumption of...
I hope it don't, my fixed income is 401K, it's getting hammered.
But what I'm getting at, where I'm going with this, is that you can make the assumption that a 3% increase in rent is going to occur, which I believe is not, but yet you are going to make the assumption that this T-bill that is fixed so low right now will remain the same in 2017, which I don't think any reasonable person would say, yeah, that's true. So why wouldn't you extrapolate that to where you assume that should go to? It just seems to be an unfair, an unfair assumption or an unfair way of using the numbers to get to an endpoint.
Okay.
That was it.
Would you provide some comments, Mr. Lorden?
Pardon me?
Would you provide some comments on a negotiated settlement?
I'd have to talk to counsel, but if you've, you've looked at the pro forma, Dick.
No, no, forget the numbers.
No, but what I'm, here's where I'm going with this, is you've looked at the numbers, we've had conversations, you're a very bright guy, and you look at those numbers, you know I have trimmed every bit of fat out of those numbers, and if anything, they're too low. Construction costs per square foot, probably too low. And based on increases that we've had while we've been in meetings, they are too low. Everybody's going up, the market's getting better, prices are going up, framers are going up on their numbers. Everybody's going up, blue board's going up 3% January 1st. Everybody's going up. Those costs aren't in there. I have to keep my numbers down, and we've had this discussion that a lot of those services that I'm providing in there, I'm providing at my cost, not what should, what the market bears. I'm doing a lot of the work myself with my company to keep the numbers down so low. If this was brought into court and professionals looked at it, they say, this guy's an idiot for thinking that he can build that project at those numbers. We've had these numbers down, I'll never get financing if I were to say, these numbers, I have to do these numbers real low, and I have to do the work myself, I can't sub it out. So there's a lot of sweat equity that's going into it at lower prices. And you have looked at many of these things, and you know that Gary Lorden has not inflated any cost in any of that pro forma, there is no fat. I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, and the numbers are the numbers. And in the end, just because I haven't inflated it, because I haven't looked for grotesque numbers that I could have, and because I haven't been a pig waiting for slaughter on any of these things that I've done, in the end, you get punished and you say, well, we want more, we want more, we want playground stuff, we want this, we want that. You can only go so far. You can only go so far. I'm at that point of so far. Rate of return of 5%, who's going to do that? What investor's going to take that? So now you want me to go lower and get into the fours? So I say, oh, okay, to get the project, do whatever you want. But how am I going to do that and then go to the bank and then they'll say, why don't you, there's the door over there? I just can't do it.
Which, to a certain extent, is how we find ourselves here in the first place. Gary took a little bit too rosy picture of where the economy was going to go when this was originally approved, and it didn't turn out to be the case, which results in him being back here for a modification of that project. That being said, we're going to continue this hearing, I can have a discussion with my client, and we can consider that issue, you know, because as Dick and Dan both pointed out, there are certainly costs involved in going to an appeal, and we would have to factor that in, you know, to our position as well.
So you're willing to have discussion?
Yes.
And we don't know if the sewer commission is ready, there's nobody here to speak for them, I don't think. Are you here to speak on their behalf?
There's a couple of things. One of the things is that may be recognized.
Say again?
May be recognized, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, I only slapped you once because you started the cross-talk.
My name is Troy Daniels, I'm a sewer commissioner, I live at 94 Main Street in Lunenburg. One of the things that counsel stated was that we would not encourage investigating Leominster. If that were part of the negotiation process, or if that was part of the consideration in the negotiation, I would encourage it, because I feel very confident that Leominster would not allow that connection directly. Secondly, I would ask, if the sewer commission were asked to be a part of that, we would ask for a rationale. We're in a different position than ZBA, and what would be our rationale for accepting something less than or different, different than we would from anyone else? You know, what would be the rationale? What would be, what would be the reason that we would do that?
You get a net gain. In other words, I would only, in my mind, and this is coming to the negotiating thought process that I have in my mind, but you've got a system, and you talked about the thousand and so forth, and then you're going to load the system up. You're looking to load the system up, and if you looked into the immediate future, you probably don't see it down there for your loading that system, you'll be out there for a long time to get the 150 units. And in this case here, if you divided by, I'd take a third, you would take a third, a third, a third, no, we're talking 50%. We're talking 50%.
I understand that.
There should be, in my mind, a net gain for, and even in the long run, when the chips are all down, and the average taxpayer, me, I have no sewer and I love it. I love it, no sewer. And, because I don't pay, I don't pay for water, I don't pay for anything. But all of a sudden, that'll become on my shoulders someday, and I don't like that thought process. But I'll be gone before that happens. But, so there.
Well, I think, and I understand that. However, I think that we're in a different position than ZBA. I think we're in a position of having to make those decisions based on something that we'll have to do for the future for other applicants.
And by the way, probably for the benefit of those that are already on the line.
And I am one of the, I am the only sewer commissioner that is on the sewer. I may be the only person here that's on the sewer. I pay into that. I understand that.
Person here.
I'm sorry, the second...
You're not the only person.
Not the only person, okay. At least, at least another person. But I understand the consequences of that and effectively supplementing or subsidizing these kinds of projects with my fees. So I do understand the larger implication of that and how that might implicate or impact my personal bill, if you will.
Yeah.
So...
And the probability of being another one to come on, another 40B in that network is probably next to minus one, I would guess.
Well, I can think of at least one other possibility, but I won't go there.
Okay. All right, we've got to get on target, and what we're going to do is, if we're ready for a motion or something, I don't know how we're going to do it.
I don't know if we're quite done here.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
The zoning board finds themselves in a position where they can override the decision of the sewer commissioners. They don't want to do that. They'd like to reach a decision that is something that the sewer commissioners would agree with. You, on the other hand, are looking for a rationale that you can apply to all the other projects. And in this case, the rationale may be, we didn't necessarily like it, but we recognize that the zoning board had to make a decision that was different than what our rules and regulations allowed. And I think what the zoning board is looking for is an indication that even though you don't like it, you believe it's in the best interests of the town to make, to come up with a number that is different than what the fee structure allows.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not speaking on behalf of the selectmen, but what I would be interested in, and not speaking for the sewer commissioners, but if there's a number in between, what does that number turn the affordability percentage into?
Exactly.
Does it get to their...
Say that again, what number does...
So if you came up with a number that's less than 1.4 million...
Yeah.
What number does it get to, to meet whatever standard MHP in mass housing and the Housing Appeals Committee would require it and not turn it over at whatever calculations, whether it's year one or year four, whatever, that would be the rationale that they would need to have, I would think, to say, what is the number? Not just pick a number, it's going to be 985,232 to get to this percentage. What is it that you move to that point to get to something that wouldn't be overturned, because it's going to be a percentage that you can match? And you're probably still going to have to tell the sewer commissioners...
That would take us out of the air of being arbitrary.
That's right. I would say that you'd be negotiating on good faith based on the process of what's affordable.
If, just example, if you took the affordable, which is 25% waived that fee, it would be
So that is a number, I'm not going to tell you what the number should be.
What was that number again? Would be what?
That would be if we waived 25% for affordable housing. 25% off of $1,437,000.
See, that brings us back to when we were building houses. The applicant would come and say, I want a percentage of so many of the affordables and do things like that. There was the way they, they looking for a discounted fee back when they were houses, and I think that's what you're coming to, is dealing with affordable.
Well, I'm actually going back to some of the first hearings when we did some waivers on some of the affordable units.
I think what Mr. Abasal was suggesting is doing a sensitivity analysis of, if the fee is $1 million, let's say, what does it, what effect does that have on the rate of return? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and I think Dick and I were talking about that, and I think, if you're not prepared tonight, Dick, to discuss...
And it still may not be affordable from the applicant's point of view. He says, I can't make, if I have to pay 800,000, I can't make it, so therefore he has to beg out or do something.
I mean, it sounds as though there would be multiple sets of numbers run, not based upon whatever different payments, you know, would be contemplated, but also based upon which inputs you use.
I mean, they're saying 400 is their ceiling. So, I mean, I think we already know what their number is, but I think we could come down, we could say, well, we know what our number is at 1.4, what's our number at 1 million? Just as a point of comparison, and use that as some information that we can use to negotiate if we get to that point.
And then I come with the old days of saying, let's cut it in half.
Well, I mean, it sounds like it's at least... Well, I mean, it sounds like it's at least something worth exploring.
I think we're getting ready to do something.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just one more clarification, that when the waiver was granted in the original application for the 25% units, that was in exchange for the developer installing sewers in Pleasantview, taking the pavement off and putting it at a.
Yeah, there was quid pro quo.
So there was a quid pro quo there at that point. So that was, that's a little different this point. This one, you're actually just going to reduce it with nothing.
You make a good point.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're at the point now where.
Thank you.
We have to act as Solomon here.
Thank you.
We've got to split the baby. Because that's what the state law empowers us to do, like it or not. We're the ones who get to decide this. We could hear everything under the sun. But the end of the day, we're the ones who make the decision. And we've got to make a decision here at some point, whether it's some number that you've been throwing out there, which may be reasonable, or what have you, but you know, someone's going to like us, someone's going to hate us, say this, but we're going to have to decide.
You're not ready to go into conference with the parties?
Well, I mean, the whole thing about having a meeting, yada, yada, you can get input for everybody, but we're going to make the final call. So I mean, I think I'm settling on a number, but.
Counsel?
I think we've heard enough. I think we can move on to other topics tonight. And this can, Dick can run the sensitivity analysis between now and the next meeting. I'm not sure if you need to keep the hearing open tonight. I've provided you a draft decision. I'm assuming you received it. So I haven't received comments. So if you want to, if the applicant wants to keep the hearing open to provide comments, they can suggest that, but.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, the only reason to keep the hearing open is that the next hearing is not scheduled within 40 days.
The next meeting.
It's scheduled December 10th, which is more than 40 days. So technically, for all practical purposes, I'm operating on the assumption that there will be no additional information coming in.
In which case, you know, if that's your desire, we can simply close tonight and give you an extension on the 40 days.
But if you want to provide more information to us after tonight?
Well, we wouldn't be able to provide any information. I could certainly provide comments to you with regard to conditions. It's not at all uncommon to do that.
So do we need more testimony? Do we need more testimony or evidence?
Well, if we're not going to go into conference with the parties to come back with a number that's satisfactory to both parties and solves the issue of arbitrary, and if we're not on dangerous grounds of being arbitrary in what we do, then you're probably correct. We're probably ready to do something now, I would say.
Yeah, the hearing doesn't need to stay open for those discussions.
Pardon?
The hearing does not need to stay open for those kind of discussions. You can close the hearing and still have those discussions.
I don't anticipate any more substantive information being provided.
Well, we can't close a meeting because of the clock, right?
No, we can give you an extension.
He's willing to waive the clock.
Waive the clock.
So why don't you give us a waiver till January 30th or something like that? We'll try to close it, wrap up this decision by the December 10th, which is the next hearing.
Is the late November in the holiday, is that why we're not meeting?
Unless you want to change it.
The day before Thanksgiving is with that.
Exactly, right.
Does that, December, if you waived it, does that put pressure on the possibility of having the two parties getting together?
I don't know if anything else.
With the board? Do we have enough time?
Well, if they give you an extension till sometime in January, if you don't get it done by December 10th, there's additional time to work on it.
Okay, as long as there's enough time. I just didn't want to get locked up, on behalf of the board, of course. All right, what's next? I'm getting crowded in my mind. Take a motion to do what?
Close the hearing.
Someone can make a motion to close the hearing?
To what?
To close the hearing.
Okay.
Do we have to review?
I'll make a motion to close it.
You can review it after you close the hearing.
Do we have anything else to review on the waivers?
You do, but you don't need to take any additional information. All you're doing is stopping.
Second the motion.
It's just deliberation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So we've closed the, we've closed it. Now what's next on the order?
Deliberations. You can start tonight, or you can, you can close the meeting tonight and then do it the next meeting.
Now, where are we in terms of, is this board going to make the decision for that number, as you see it now?
Yes.
Now, they don't have any say anymore.
They never did.
The sewer fee number?
Yeah.
You make the final decision, but you are allowed to have discussions with the applicant or with the sewer commission, with the board of selectmen, as much as you want.
Okay, so if we start off with a plate of 50/50 of the 1.4, I thought it was 1.2, 1.4 million.
It's 1.6 now.
Pardon?
Good thing we closed the hearing.
And we cut it in half. And that's the beginning point. And if they want to talk about it, we can listen.
Right, someone could make that motion, Mr. Chairman, then we could have it second, go into discussion, and then take it from there.
Okay, make a motion.
Well, I don't think we're doing that right now, Mr. Chairman. Is that?
You don't need to make motions on things like this. You can just have a conversation. It's up to you how you want to run this deliberation. You can, what I would suggest is we go through the decision that I drafted at some point, whether you can start tonight or we can do it another night.
Oh, yeah, that was on this agenda. We hadn't gotten to there. Let me just look at the agenda.
Do you have purpose?
We're going to review the, by the way, with all the waivers, is all the waivers approved or settled, with the exception of the sewerage fees?
I have a few, I have a few questions. I think there's a few issues that the board needs to deliberate on.
Go ahead.
You want to jump into the waivers?
Yeah, in other words, let's clean up this action.
Yeah, why don't we, it's kind of laid down, Mr. Chairman. I mean, to me personally, I'd like to get going.
Baseball game one, too.
So when do we want to do this? In December?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman.
And you're going to clean it up finally?
I've given you my draft.
I got that.
Can we, maybe just go to the waivers and just do the parts that he's asking questions on, so we can let him clean it up?
Okay, that's fair. I mean, I just got the waiver email stuff, so I really didn't get a chance to go into all of it.
We've gone as late as 10:30, you know, it's only quarter to nine.
I don't want to go there again today, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think there's that many, in that way.
There's been some brutal meetings here lately.
You have the ones, Dan, that you were, you're vicious with?
For some reason, my highlighting isn't.
So are we going to invite the, by letter, the both boards to invite them for conference with this board?
You only can invite up to three people because once you go to three.
No, no, this is a work session.
All right, so what's the sense of that?
I want you to clean up what you've got to do.
Well, if we're going to talk about cleanup issues, can we start with issues relating to the fire chief?
Say again?
Can we start with issues relating to the?
You shouldn't have let Wes leave. Yeah, I didn't know. Okay, what are they?
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to the chief this week, and this, I put a note under condition O-31. The chief says he hasn't received any responses to his concerns about the material of the fire lanes, snow storage, insufficient turning radius. So that kind of goes back to the applicant to.
Yeah, my understanding was that Fred Hamway had reviewed those issues and resolved.
Yeah.
The chief said that. Maybe the chief was left out of the loop.
Yeah, but it's his issues, so.
But my understanding is that whatever concerns had been previously raised have been resolved.
Okay, but they were raised by the chief, and he says they're not resolved, so.
Because he hasn't seen whatever changes were made.
Okay, but the answers were given to the engineer, the peer review engineer, and. I still go back to the point, it was the chief's issue. So if the board wants, I mean, if I were the board, I would want the chief to tell me, yes, they're resolved. We'll have Wes contact him. Okay.
Can we make a note to Lisa?
Yeah, actually, she watches the tape.
Yeah, but we've got to highlight it in case she misses it.
Okay, I will.
That was O-31?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Does chief to acknowledge the conclusion, whatever?
Yeah, or Wes needs to probably talk to the chief and explain what the changes were and make sure those are satisfied.
Okay.
I had a note in here that we needed a sightline improvement condition, and that was an old note, and I don't, it's been so long, I don't remember what, how that came about. Do you guys have a recollection of, is there a sightline issue with the intersection of Waylon Road?
Fred reviewed those. I mean, that was part of his traffic review. Remember, he wasn't reviewing traffic count, but he was reviewing internal circulation and site distances.
Okay, so you don't know what this is for?
I have no idea.
Which one is that, Dan?
O-32. I'm not in the waivers, I'm in the main body.
O-32, oh, need sight. Okay.
Do you have Hamway's most recent report?
Yeah, I think so.
There was a site problem at the end of Piedmont. I remember that. And they talked about cutting back the, but obviously, we're not going down there.
That might have been it. Maybe that was left over from the previous project. The Water District, I talked to the Water Superintendent, Fran, this week, and we need to have some agreement between you and them about what parcel you're going to be conveying to the Water District. So I actually, I just took a GIS map and scribbled a line where I thought the parcel would be. I mean, Fran's, I thought was that you were going to convey essentially a square across the street, which would be basically line up with his lines. So what we need is some sort of plan that we can reference in the decision that by a certain date, the developer will convey the land shown on Exhibit A.
So Wes, finish that sketch plan.
Wes isn't on either of them.
Can you have?
Well, I actually spoke to Wes about that today, and he asked me if he needed to do it now, and I thought it would just simply be one of the conditions of the decision. But if it's something that you need to specifically reference.
Well, we need to be able to reference a description of land, right? We can't just say, you agree.
I'll have Wes draw something up.
The idea was we wanted to make sure we were getting an approval we could live with before we spent the money for Wes to prepare a plan. Because it's obviously not going to happen if we don't get a decision that is acceptable.
I agree with that, but the condition needs to be able to reference something. It can reference my back of the envelope, if that's okay with you. It probably isn't. So it's up to you. I can either do that or we can have a more precise plan.
It's up to Gary, whether he wants to pay Wes to do the plan now or.
Let me chat with him to see the cost.
Okay.
Okay, then, moving to the waivers, yeah, I had a note on waiver for Section 6.1.2.2. So this is like a screening requirement?
That was when we were doing homes and it was close to Waylon Road. The houses were close, and they were putting a fence in for screening, but we moved everything back and removed the fence.
Significantly.
Right.
Hundreds of feet further away.
So the question is, I mean, this is a new waiver. So the question is, does, and the board doesn't have to decide this tonight. This is really just my flagging an issue, that this is a new waiver, they're taking the fence off, and that's something for you to think about if you still want the fence there. Or is it sufficient that the buffer is now larger? Okay, or the setback. Section 6.5.1.3, this is the sign provision. We talked about this a little bit during the hearing, about the size of the sign. I don't remember there being a consensus on what that was going to be, and so the board needs to think about, do you want to put some sort of cap on the size of the sign? Because they're asking for a waiver from the three-square-foot apartment.
I'm sure we do.
So I don't recommend you grant a blanket waiver, because then they put up a billboard. So there needs to be some sort of dimension in there.
This goes, just to get back up in my mind, when we approve this, then it goes into development plan review, yeah?
Well, a substantive provision like this really shouldn't be deferred. I mean.
Signs are in the domain of the development plan review.
That would, is that, that would be subsumed within a 40B permit, though.
Yeah, but that, we're granting the waivers. So if we grant them a waiver on a sign, they've got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. All right, so the next one is 6.514.
Would it be helpful if we gave you a dimension now?
It would be.
Gary's suggesting 32 square feet, eight by four feet.
Eight by four?
Yep.
Was there a setback question on that, too, as to whether or not it'd be really visible from the street or setback a little bit further?
That's the one he's just coming to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
6.514.
If you don't, there's an interesting case in terms of signs and so forth. We're dealing with a case now for a gas station on 2A, but the people who object are from the, that, what's the name of that place you live?
Stone Farm.
Stone Farm. Pay attention. In Stone Farm, they have two monuments on either side decorated, and they get bushes and everything, you know? And apparently, they didn't worry about line of sight. So if you come in out of Stone Farm, and that, because I have to do it because of the activity in the gas station. So you come out, and if you're going to take a left turn, there's a slight curve up there, and that monument that's sitting there blocks that view. And if you would take that and the bushes and move them back that much, I could see five more cars, or three more cars.
You get a Lamborghini, you get a Subaru. I don't have any problem.
My son came home from school today with a poster of a Lamborghini. I think I'm in trouble.
Fantastic. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I saw him come home with a poster, I'm like, I think I'm in trouble.
How many?
Two.
How many Lamborghinis?
Zero. And that'll stay that way forever.
All right, so the next section was 6.514.
Well, actually, I wish it wouldn't, but.
Yeah, that was the last.
6.514, I wasn't clear, Paul, what you were asking for here.
Neither was I, which is why I asked Gary.
Minimum distance from the street line? 50% of the required front yard offset.
This came from Wes, so we may need to consult with Wes.
Okay, so we can talk about it next time, just to raise it. See if there's something else, yep.
It's total to be less than 50%, so it'll still be within that.
Section 41046, this is the cover over the drains. Fred had, Fred Hamway had recommended that the cover be at least two feet and should be a sufficient pipe type and class to withstand the vehicle loads. And I had a question in my mind, well, what is the type, what is the pipe type and class? So we just need some clarification on that from what you're proposing and whether or not, I mean, we can follow up with Fred to make sure what you're proposing is adequate. Do we know what you're proposing on that?
Isn't that what's shown on the plans? Isn't that what he did?
Are the specs on the plans for this?
That's what I understood, wasn't it?
Pardon me?
Wasn't the specs for that on the plans itself?
Yes.
I thought that he'd made those changes.
Okay, so I'll follow up with Fred, that is flagging it. Similar issue with 5231 about, I mean, I had some notes in my notepad about what you had agreed to, and I just want to make sure that that was going to be satisfactory with.
We agreed to Fred Hamway's recommendation.
Yeah. Is what I have in here correct? That's 12 inches gravel?
I'd have to look at his recommendation. I wouldn't want to.
I have to go through my notes.
Yeah, just check against Fred's recommendation.
I guess that's it. The sewer fees? Yeah.
Well, I thought that one had been granted already.
It might be helpful, it might be helpful to have Fred here at the next deliberation session. I mean, just to make sure that we are covering, maybe not.
It'd probably be more cost-effective for you to have discussions with him offline, rather than have him come all the way in here for a night.
Yeah, I guess if we can resolve them, okay.
There's not, there's not a lot of issues.
They've had enough dialogue between the two of them. I think he's going to respond that all matters have been addressed.
Okay, I'll talk to Fred and see where we are.
You outside?
That's the big ones, yep.
Okay, let's see, we need to, for Lisa, the board, if the board will allow the chair to take the responsibility of inviting some dialogue at some appropriate time between the, now, do we do this? How are we going to do this? At the next, we're not going to do it at the next meeting. How do we get this workshop going?
What are you proposing?
For open discussion of dialogue, are we done away with that between the board, between the applicant and the sewer commission? You say we can still talk, okay, but what's the vehicle in terms of having a meeting?
I think things can happen offline. I think Mr. Haverty can get back to me about if there's a counterproposal on fees. Then I could talk to you and Dick, and we could perhaps talk to the sewer commission, the selectmen about the counterproposal, and bring it all back to the board at the next session.
They're going to start, I don't have to do, or the board doesn't have to do anything. You're going to, are you going to, they're going to create the dialogues?
It's up to them. And we've told them what our position is. We know what their position is today. If they're willing to compromise, they can, they can tell us. It doesn't have to be tonight. It can be next week.
We'll have that discussion, and I'll get back to Dan.
So you're going to have it, and you're going to do a dialogue?
With Dan. With Dan.
Okay, and then, and then if there's.
You're seeing a lot of Dan coming up soon anyhow.
And we get copied, we're copied to the dialogue. And then what's the next thing? I just want to make sure we don't misstep here. Then the sewer commission, what are they responsibility here?
Well, like I say, we can, if it's appropriate, and this is up to you. And so if they come back to me with some number or some proposal, I'm going to talk to you about it. And then we can decide if we want to talk to the sewer commission about it and the board of selectmen about it. This can all happen offline between now and the next meeting. And then if we, if we think we have something that's interesting and worthwhile talking about with the board, then we can bring it up at the next meeting with the board.
Then that becomes part of the next meeting?
Right.
Okay, so that's the first time I was trying to figure out how we're going to have a meeting with, interactively with the applicant.
It's up to you. Mr. Chairman, you can, you can.
No, I just soon do it the clean way.
Well, we can convene a meeting. We can convene a meeting anytime with 48 hours notice. Yeah.
I don't think the board is anxious to do it either.
I don't see the point myself.
Okay, so in other words, you're going to start a dialogue. Sewer people are going to start a dialogue, or they're going to get copied on some communication, right?
They're going to start a dialogue with us.
Okay.
And then I'll talk to you.
And then the sewer commission, when do they come into it? Are they both start the dialogue? This is what I'm trying to get to.
I think we know how the sewer commission feels. They don't want us to waive anything, Mr. Chairman. I think it's up to us to decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, but we need this communication setting up through Dan and through Dick, that there is a discussion going on. The parties are talking, and then, and then at our next meeting, December 10th, if there's some constructive dialogue other than this board dictating what the number shall be, then we deal with it, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's the first time this board needs to meet. So everything is going to be offline and in the hands of the applicant and the sewer commission. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say it's in the hands of them, but it's offline. And you as the chairman will, I will communicate with you about any conversations I have with Paul. And then we can decide, you can decide if you want to link in the sewer commissioners or anybody else.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything on this side of the ledger until December 10th. And then you guys decide what to do, okay? All right, I just want to get it clear on mine, because we could misstep.
Is there another hearing scheduled for December 10th? Have you talked to?
We're going to, we're going to do that now.
No, have you talked to Lisa about another hearing?
No, I didn't, but I preempted her. I stepped on her prerogatives. It's got to be December 10th, we have an interesting case of someone with a piece of land that wants to get a building permit, and we already scheduled for 7 o'clock. And I made that until 8 o'clock, so we're going to start this meeting at 8 o'clock.
So this is at 8?
Pardon?
The 40B is at 8?
8 o'clock, yeah.
September 10th.
Pardon?
December 10th, 8 o'clock.
December 10th, 8 o'clock. Lisa wasn't around to handle it, so I did it. I'll probably screw that up.
And just to confirm, you're going to give us a letter, Mr. Haverty, extending? Yes. To January 30th.
Okay, so now get into the, finish up what we didn't do here, was we just reviewed the draft, okay? And then the final, final copy is going to be available in the mail.
Can I ask one question? Did you address the playground?
Yeah.
I know Dave Glad had brought it up and.
Yep, I responded to that today, late in the afternoon. So the original decision actually had a condition that stipulated when the playground would have to be conveyed to the town and when the equipment would have to be built and paid for. So we're not changing that. That still has to happen. What I changed was when it has to happen, it has to happen with the first occupancy permit in the first building, I think I said.
Is the applicant in agreement with that?
Right, we decided that last meeting. After the second building's built, before the third building started, that's when the playground.
And we can fiddle with that language, but what I put in the decision is basically the same as what we had before, that it has to be built before a certain point in the project.
We had agreed.
Okay.
Your recommendation was after the second building, and I said that would be fine.
Right, right, we decided that last.
Okay, are we all done?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, the chair will accept the motion to continue this meeting to December 10th at 8 o'clock.
Motion to continue.
A move, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Yeah, good night.
Motion to adjourn.
I think it's like 8:00.